What's going on? The video is on second. Moving is go. Perfect. Ready? I don't need to, we're gonna call the meeting till later. And it is seven oh seven. So adequate meeting of this, adequate notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. By advertising the annual meeting note, the annual meeting notice to the official newspapers. Providing a copy of the agenda to the newspapers and posting a copy of the agenda at Borough Hall. And I ask everyone to stand for the flag, so please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Here.
Councilmember Doherty? Council President Lee Tag?
Here.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Here.
Councilmember Updike?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Thank you. Um, we are going to take a, we're going to do a public hearing on two um ordinances. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So the first uh public hearing is on ordinance nine three six, which is a temporary emergency sign ordinance. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next ordinance at uh number nine thirty seven. Which is amending chapter three titled Police Regulations of the Code of the Borough to add a new section. Three dash eleven titled trapping of animals on municipal property. Any members of the public wishing to speak on that? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing on these ordinances?
So moved.
Thank you, councilwoman, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, councilwoman. Um. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, now we're going to take a motion to open the public comment period.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, councilwoman. Updike? Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes. Okay, are there any members of the public wishing to comment? All right, okay. So then um we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. In the form listed below, there will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So um. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, roll call, please, Sam.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Great. Um, number six approval of minutes, the May seventh uh twenty twenty five regular and executive session meeting minutes. Um. Councilman O'Brien is not eligible to vote, so we. So we have the table, right, okay, do we, do we need a motion for that, okay? Resolutions twenty twenty five dash ninety nine, and this is authorizing a grant application to the two thousand five twenty five cops hiring program grant. And what this is to speak on it is um, we've applied for this in the past. Um, this is um, I'm looking at the one. This is a grant that we are applying, it doesn't mean that we've been successful in getting the grant yet. There is a uh portion that the borough is responsible for, but otherwise for three years. The um. The grant will fund. Most of the benefit and salary package for hiring a new officer. So this is our route, our easiest route of going about getting that fourth officer that we've been trying to accomplish. And um in utilize it most utilizing the salary with this grant. We want to actually recruit someone and send them through. Academy and have them start with us and be really routed in our rooted within our community. So are there any questions? Comments? No. Okay, so um is there a motion to authorize the grant application?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yeah.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash one hundred is the chapter one five nine age friendly community enhancement. And that is the grant that. We are um. We have to enable this for the, oh no, this is not the same, this is the. Oh yes, it, this is part of the aging in place grants. And this is uh what we need to do through the uh division of local services within DCA to the. Uh, I'm sorry, within human services to be able to collect this grant. So are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one hundred?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt. Sam, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt? Yeah, Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay. Um, resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh one is the uh approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract. With the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Creek Road uh improvement project. Is there uh any, are there any questions or comments on this? No, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh one?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, Sam, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh two. Is authorizing an online auction of surplus property, we do this occasionally where we've identified old vehicles. Equipment that is no longer of use to the borough and we put it out to uh sell through an auctioning service so that we get some. Some money back um on these uh things that we no longer need in the borough. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to support resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh two?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt. Um, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh three, award of professional service contract to Colliers Engineering and Design for the Engineering of South Washington Street. River Street and Hawk Street Improvement Project. And to talk about that a bit, I do wanna give a brief summary. Because I know all of these projects, at least for me, are starting to blur together and it's nice to know exactly what this is, so. Um, this is the. Washington Street, part of River Road and Hawk Street is resurfacing with some um. Uh, with the trail crossing enhancement. And some minor drainage work uh that's planned, but it's not substantive, so. Um, that is a brief explanation of that resolution, so are there any other questions or comments on that?
No.
No, okay, hearing none, is there a motion to um support twenty twenty five dash one oh three?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, um, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt? Yes. Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, resolution twenty twenty five um one oh five. Is the, let me choose, we found back up the two, I'm sorry, one oh four. Um, is award a professional con, a service contract to Colliers Engineer and Design for the Engineering of the Harrison Street. And Seventh Street Improvement Project, so as attached to these resolutions, there are um. Uh, photos clarifying what the project looks like, but in short, it will be um resurfacing. And enhancing the crosswalk that is uh in front of the school is my understanding. It includes, the resurfacing includes parts of Lower Seventh. Also Harrison from Seventh to Twelve, including the front of the school. Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
I have just a question, will that be done before school starts?
That is the plan.
The goal.
Mm-hmm. So hopefully the rain stays at bay and um once it goes out to bid, it will move quickly. Um, so is there a motion to approve twenty twenty five dash one oh four?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman O'Brien?
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh five, authorizing the use of a payroll service. To prepare payment documentation, take possession of borough funds and make such disperse, dispersment itself on behalf of the borough. So this is um engaging the payroll service in my understanding, a general housekeeping resolution. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to support resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh five?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh six, authorizing the uh qualified purchasing agent solicit quotes or request for proposals for the installation of HVAC units. At the police department. This is um something that we have worked on to get grant monies to fund, so we are excited about this um going out to bid finally. Any questions or comments on the resolution? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion uh to support twenty twenty five dash one oh five? No, one oh six.
Um.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, uh, roll call, please, Sam?
Yes. Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh seven. Authorizes Pinoni Associates Inc. to provide professional services for the installation of two backup generators. Um, we've been talking about this project as well, um. So are there any questions or comments about this? No, okay, hearing none, is there a motion to support resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh seven?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike? Um, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt? Yes. Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Yeah. Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh eight. Is.
Just fixed.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a typo, it says twenty twenty eight, Sam, on the agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Dash, it's right on the resolution though, so that's good. Um, it is increasing duties and salary for Deputy Clerk Kelly L. Force. Dash.
See Hanoits.
See Hanoits. Um, as we all know, Deputy Kelly is our deputy clerk here, she's taking on additional responsibilities. So we want to um increase her salary to um have her properly um paid for the additional, additional duties. So um. We're increasing her salary to sixty thousand. And the CFO has determined that there are sufficient funds to cover the increase. Any questions or comments? No, okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve twenty twenty five dash one oh eight?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, uh, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh nine, authorizing a contract uh agreement for technology upgrades within the borough of Frenchtown with Service Electric Cable Television and Communications. And Thompson, Thompson Networks. Uh, this is a long time coming, as I look at Sam, and I certainly know that. The police department has been stymied by um some of this, so. Uh, this is definitely a good direction, we're bringing our, our technology into the aughts. Um, any questions or comments? I do wanna thank everyone that got us to this point, though, so um, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh nine?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt? Yes. Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, now returning to ordinances, we have ordinance nine thirty six. Which is the temporary emergency sign ordinance for adoption. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Definitely.
Thank you, Councilwoman um Bernhardt, uh, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Ordinance nine thirty seven, amending chapter three titled Police Regulations of the Code of the Borough to add a new section. Three dash eleven titled trapping of animals on municipal property for adoption. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Up, uh, Councilman O'Brien, um, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Ordinance nine thirty eight, amending property maintenance code to provide for the registration and maintenance of property pending foreclosure. And that is an ordinance for introduction. And this is regarding the property that we discussed last month?
Well, it's not a specific property.
Okay.
This is part of uh your updating your property maintenance code, and this would be a series of ord, but the first in a series of ordinances that you will see in the coming months. This particular ordinance provides that if a property is in foreclosure through a lending institution, a bank. Uh, and clerk is giving notice of all the uh properties within the barrel that are subject to private lender foreclosure or any lender foreclosure. The, if the property is both in foreclosure and abandoned or vacant, then the bank has a responsibility to try to upkeep the property. So when the notice comes in, the clerk would send in, uh, would send the bank and reply a copy of the ordinance. And say to them, this is an abandoned or vacant property, you have to maintain it, and it's, so it's, it's a prob, it's a part of a. Your overall, all overhaul of, of the property.
Yeah, and we are hoping to address some other issues through passing um other ordinances around some of the issues that we're dealing with in town, so. Okay, so then um is there a motion to introduce ordinance nine thirty eight?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, roll call, please, Sam?
Yeah. Council President Lee Tag?
Yeah.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, new business, permission to use the Borough Park as a rest stop for the um. Saint's Peter and Paul Church four day walking pilgrimage through Frenchtown on August eighth. Please note that no pavilion is needed, and this is something that is done annually, okay? So is there a motion to approve the uh visit?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, um, roll call?
Councilmember Bernhardt? Yeah. Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, second item of business is the New Jersey League of Municipalities held on November eighteenth. Through twenty, through November twentieth. Pre-registration begins on July first of twenty twenty five. Um. And I guess we're asking for a motion to extend the invitation to our council members to attend this conference again this year. And um process any registrations, so if you are interested in attending. Please let Samantha know so that that can be handled. Um, and hopefully that we get to take advantage of the early bird registration rate. Okay, so is there a motion to approve? The uh registrations for this year's League of Municipalities Conference?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien, um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um. Council comments, I'm going to start with you, Councilwoman Updike?
I'm happy to be here. I'm gonna put it like, yes, but yes, um, thank you. For wanting me to still be here.
Yeah.
Other than that, no.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
On your primary, thank you. Nothing?
No.
Okay.
Uh, no comments.
No comments?
I'm also happy to be here.
So, congratulations.
And I do have some comments, I met with uh Kelly Pickering, the librarian, and. Chris Monday, the uh president of the library board, and Brad Meyer, the mayor this past week. Um. And so we have some good things happening, the library was deep cleaned finally this past weekend, so it's in great shape. Um. And we discussed having it, them clean the library once a month deeply, so Kelly, it will be up to Kelly to um do the daily, you know. Maintenance, maintenance, um, and. Uh, Kelly has requested that Susie Snyder be approved as a library substitute. Uh, because Jackie Campbell, I think, is no longer available, so rather than um rely on volunteers. Which she has been doing in the past, uh, we would rather have a um, somebody hired who will be paid. In Kelly's absence, um, and if we approve that, then Susie will start the paperwork process. Uh, and the fingerprinting and all that is needed for her employment. Um. We discussed having uh like an event at the library in October, like this is kind of fun, the library's open kind of thing. Um, which Kelly will choose a date and we'll, we have a meeting scheduled for July to plan that event. Uh, the library will have a booth at National Night Out this year. Um, let's see, there's still money, grant money for building upgrades. Um.
Oh, good.
And so we discussed new lighting and new windows for the library, which hopefully will um be done by the end of this year. Kelly will contact Bill Burr about that. Um, but we also discussed the possibility of increasing the library hours to twenty five a week. So we can make it more vibrant and more people will have, you know, more opportunities to come and enjoy the library. Uh, Kelly has joined the board of the Frenchtown Preschool. It's exciting, and she's working with the uh Frenchtown Elementary School on a summer reading program. Uh, which will take place throughout the month of July.
Thanks, yeah, that is good stuff, right? Okay, um, so. Albert, should we do a resolution that gets uh Susie Snyder into that position?
Yes, I understand that that's your recommendation, you're the mayor, you hire uh Susie Snyder as an assistant librarian.
Substitute.
Yes, yeah, and Susie is on the library board.
Right, okay, well, I, if I may, I'll, uh, and if that's the pleasure of the council to proceed forward, I'll uh. Quickly do a resolution orally, subject to ratification at the next meeting with a formal written resolution. Uh, the resolution would be as follows, whereas the Board of Frenchtown Library is in need of having an assistant librarian on duty. For sixteen hours each week to operate the borough library. And whereas the current assistant librarian is, under certain circumstances, not able to meet the sixteen hour requirement. And volunteers cannot fill that position. And whereas the mayor and council la, library liaison met with borough resident and. Library board member Susie Snyder to fill the uh hours uh not being met by the current librarian assistant. And find that she is qualified to fill in as needed. Uh, and whereas the Borough Common Council desires to offer Susie Snyder a conditional offer of employment. To fill in as library assistant on a mass needed basis at sixteen dollars and thirty two cents per hour. As a part-time employee of the borough with no benefits. Now therefore it be resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Frenchtown County of Alton, Kent State or New Jersey as follows one. Conditional offer of employment is uh hereby made to uh Susie Snyder, subject to the necessary background checks too. Provided the background checks are clear, the employment of Susie Snyder would become effective upon the director. Of public safety notifying the clerk that background checks have uh are negative. Uh, paragraph three, a written resolution ratifying and confirming this resolution will be uh. Addressed at the next borough council meeting. For this resolution shall take effect immediately, um, if that captures your thoughts, then you can.
Well, entertain a motion.
Uh, to proceed forward, but again, this is just an interim basis to get someone on as soon as they pass the clearance, the background clearance. That upon the police director know or acquire the court, she can start filling those duties, and then next month. You can do a more formal ratifying resolution.
So, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, but, thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, roll call, please, Sam?
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Great.
And that would have been resolution.
Twenty twenty five dash one ten?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Albert.
Yes.
I'll, I'll write something up and send it over.
Sam didn't get that level of detail that quickly. You're good. Thank you, though, um, anything else, council comments? No, that's, that's good, good, good stuff. Um, and speaking of the National Night Out, I do want to remind everyone that we are having our National Night Out on Saturday, August ninth. We've got a save the date that's gone out, it's been posted, um, so please mark your calendars, it will be a good time had by all. Um, also, thank you to the Frenchtown Police Department and Fire Department for their assistance with the World Shortest Pride Parade on Saturday. It was um, it was well attended and a good time, it was, yeah. Uh, the FBPA and Love French Town always does uh an amazing job with that, and especially Morgan Taylor um. Being the front of the parade with her, with her, yeah, with her signage. So, yeah, it was great. Um, finally, the mayor and I met with the Environmental Commission to talk about some issues. We talked about um the Thompson Track and started to uh discuss what possible uh amenities could be established there. Uh, talked about creating the Open Space uh Committee that will help us get to that, to get to that space. Um, and also about how we could work more collaboratively. So um, we are going to start having them come in um and do presentations. Hopefully quarterly through the year so that we can keep in, in touch with them and uh. Again, work more collaboratively on efforts instead of hearing that they're doing something over here in a silo. We're doing something very similar um, in our silo and um. But having similar interests and outcomes, so, and then also starting to include them, I think. They'll, when we meet with our um, pre-planning with the D E P. Um, in, you know, in the spring, getting ready for our high uh, high tourism season, so. I think it's good to have them at the table. Well, um. And. I think that is it um, for my report. Um, and so is there, are there any pieces of correspondence in the packet that? Should be discussed or lifted up, okay? And then um, also, this is our second public comment period. So I'll take a motion to open the second public comment period.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, second, Councilwoman Bernhardt, um. So all in favor? I, okay, opposed, um, do you have any public comments, sir? No?
No, no.
Okay, hearing none, uh, we can close public comments. Uh, do we have to take a vote on that? Okay, and so then I'm going to move to a motion to adjourn. Is there someone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bernhardt, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Updike, all in favor?
I.
Oppose. Good night, everyone.